Okay. It's six thirty, time to start the Conservation Commission for the city of Torrington in room two eighteen at one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. See. Present this evening is Dan McGinnis, Karen Spitz, Assistant City Planner, Nate Nardi Cyrus, myself, Christine Altman, and guest Jeff Palacka. First order of business is the minutes for approval for the April twenty second, twenty twenty five regular meeting.
Make a motion to be approved.
I'm here.
Oh. For the record, Jeremy Spitz just arrived. Okay. Okay. Yeah, so you were here at the last meeting, can you give me a second for accepting the minutes?
Second.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New business, donated trees, brainstorming session, adoption services, et cetera.
Nice to meet you, sir.
We met him for now, you remember when we talked to him, we were all on that pod.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Pluck is interested in potentially joining, so we had to be watching and appreciate it. So it's fun, just so you know who you're sitting next to.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so this was a commerce, this was one of them, I brought up a while ago, we were really busy in spring. Let me get it, my.
Needs his mic.
Hello? Okay, great. So, uh, business, donated trees, this is something that was brought up a while ago and it hasn't gotten on our agenda because we were busy with the spring activities. But periodically I'm approached by the Public Works Director and he'll say, you know, this woman donated five oak trees, or we have extra trees from this tree giveaway that we need something to do with. What does the Conservation Commission think we should do with these trees? And I never have a good response for him, it's like, well, you know the parks and, you know, and he's like, yeah, I already looked at that, do you have any conservation properties that might be good for planting trees or anything like that? So this is really just a conversation to think about if we do receive trees, how we might want to disperse them, whether it be open space, whether we want to try to match people up who could plant trees. We kind of also first added this to the agenda when we thought that there was the ever-source tree giveaway. And ever-source was like, basically like, well, you can have, all the extras can go to the Conservation Commission. And we didn't know how many there would be if we were gonna get like.
Could it be a hundred?
You're right, we're gonna get twenty trees and we're gonna not know what to do with these things, but they all went for that. So we're not under any kind of gun right now, but just figured if folks had ideas on where we could potentially, you know, yeah, if whether we should be giving these away to people, or if there should be, you know, looking at conservation properties or whatever. But yeah, Jeff?
We did a similar thing up at Topsmead State Forest. I used to, I was an active member to Friends of Topsmead a long time ago, and we did a memorial thing where if we had, like, say if the town had some open space or somebody that was nominated for a memorial tree, if some of the trees are nice, depending on what they are, if they're like a sycamore or a tulip tree or something, we could do a memorial, you know, just like if somebody notable in the town passed away, or, you know, somebody approached us or approached the commission. For, you know, I'm not familiar with all the open spots in Torrington, but it would be a nice thing and we could label it as such. And just a thought.
Yeah.
It was successful up there, there's a couple of them, they did.
Yeah, and most of the conservation properties are kind of, they're often from subdivisions as like a kind, like a set aside for property, or that we inherited it somehow during the city.
Yeah, but a lot of more tree, what about street tree?
So, and I've brought that up as well, that's part of, if you remember earlier, I was applying for a grant for doing an inventory and stuff. A lot of it is, you know, so Ray, you're the Public Works Director, is also the tree warden. And it's like, well, Ray, do you know where they can go? And he's like, well, we don't have a comprehensive inventory of where they could go, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think there's spots downtown.
Yeah.
Other trees that they've had in the past that go and died.
Right.
You know, I would think it wouldn't be too hard to go.
Plob.
You got a couple of spots.
Yeah, well, maybe we can reserve, yeah, let me just put that on there, too.
One of my thoughts was to kind of categorize them by size and type. So like, some of them would probably be more suitable as a street tree or a memorial tree or something like that. But then the other thing I was thinking was, I was actually thinking about when people sign up for mulch with tree services, and basically they just get themselves on a list and it's first come, first served basis. If the tree company, you know, who is taking down a tree is in the area and they chip all of the smaller wood, you just end up with a delivery, you know, they give you a short notice and, you know, you end up with a delivery. And so I was thinking about, could we, uh, ask, you know, put a promotion that says like, if you're interested in, in trees, you can get on our list, tell us whether you want a small, medium, or large tree. And, and then if we get a donation, we can just, you know, give them a call. I mean, I could do that and ask them if they want it.
Right. And they do have programs like that that are more sophisticated with like, they're actually funded. I think, did Goshen just develop one of these? But I know at least, I think it's Enfield, they have like a street tree commission. And they came up with like a program where they have a giveaway every year for trees. I mean, there's already organizations that do this kind of stuff, right? Like, but this is actually like a straight, I think, giveaway for as long as it's like in the front yard. And there's like certain sort of, and it has to be right tree, right place for power lines and stuff like that. But, but, um, I mean, that's something that, you know, I think would require more, more effort, but maybe down the road. It's similar.
How many trees do you, do you get offered?
Usually it's just like a handful over the course of the year, where it'd be like, especially around Earth Day, right? Sometimes people, people.
They want to donate?
Yeah, they're just like, but they want to donate a tree. I don't really know how, some people had, just like, they want to donate in a certain way.
I wonder if maybe that's one of the things that we should do is, as part of, what we ask at Earth Day cleanup is, are you interested in, in a tree?
Yeah.
At least as a start.
Right, something small, right?
Yeah, like you were saying, identify a location or two where some trees could go, you don't have to. Things to start with, right?
I mean, there's parking lots right out here, and those parking lots will be all, you know, the city parking lots use some more trees.
Totally, totally.
Yeah.
And it's always, it gets harder with the municipal properties because people, because then, then you're dealing with their maintenance crew and them not wanting to have to maintain an additional tree and that kind of thing. I mean, well, I agree, but if they have to receive it, then it's, we could do some guerrilla gardening when you go in there and just plant it without, and let them deal with it after the fact, but, um, no, I mean, I think all of these are good. I, again, we're not really in a situation where we have any right now, and it kind of developed when we thought we were gonna get some. So I think it's helpful to have a list of, you know, or plan for maybe next Earth Day doing something small. We could definitely assess, we've done our, our conservation properties, we've like, kind of made preliminary assessments. Going forward, we could also try to assess like the favorability of planting in certain locations. There's only one I'm thinking of which was like a subdivision set aside, we've talked about this one before. Off of Albert Park Road, there was like a subdivision up in there that's pretty recent. But there was a piece of property there that had like, it was kind of still open, but not, you know, probably was lawn at one point and it's starting to turn into a young forest. But most of the properties are forested, so it's difficult, there's not, you know, a good place to put them.
I could say one more thing, if you do get an allotment of trees, you guys know what I got going on up on Mountain Road. So when it comes to storing them and caring for them, I'm actually starting to do some apple plantings and stuff and trying to survey what I got, because I guess there were, I found some apple trees up there that I think are over a hundred years old. I was looking into some grafting and things, some kind of little hobbyist, horticulture type guy. So say you did get some trees or you got something interesting that I could, I would volunteer, I mean, I do have the space, I could take care of them. I have some basic knowledge, I'm no arborist like some of these folks around here, but I can hold my own. If you just throw that out there.
Yeah, that's great.
Like, you know, who would take care of them until we go through all the legwork of where we could put them and get approvals? And you can't put a weeping willow over here because it'll destroy the pipes, you know, stuff, you know, things like that, so.
And we have had that issue, you'll see with one of the other projects we're working on where we had a tree planting scheduled and it got delayed and we had to get the trees to somewhere. So it's always good to have a place where they can be like watered and maintained if they do have to sit in pots over.
If I had to, I'm sure, I'm getting ready to clear some of the fields there, and if I could, I could plant them. And, you know, obviously it would belong to you guys, but they would be there, you know.
Yeah.
That reminds me. Northwest Conservation District asked me to ask if anyone knows what happened to the mountain mint from, was anybody taking care of the mountain mint? From the Bannon Street?
I don't remember ever getting mountain mint.
I remember it was just, it was discussed, but I don't remember seeing it.
You don't remember seeing it either? Okay.
I, I mean.
I mean, I remember it being in the plan.
I remember it being in the plan, I feel like maybe I remember bringing it to Bannon Street, but.
Okay. All right.
Could have been there, but I don't remember seeing it on Bannon Street.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, because it was a, it was the only herbaceous thing, so.
Okay.
Yeah, they, it's, it's disappeared.
If anyone forgets the mountain mint, let Northwest Conservation District know. Okay. Moving on. A tabling discussion, new banner.
So this is something, so we had that one tabling event that I think was challenging at a.
Winterfest?
A Winterfest.
That was challenging.
So cold.
Jeff, I don't know if you've been to Winterfest before on Burr Pond, but it was, it was very cold this year and it was our first tabling foray in quite some time, and it was, it was a challenge. I came at the end, so I can't really.
It was a challenge no matter when it was, it was just, it was so cold and windy, oh my god.
But I guess.
Some ways was nice, but in other ways, you know, I think the crowd.
It was shaded, well, I think, yeah, I mean, we did get some traffic, but the, the big draw for sure is the ice fishing and the ice skating. That is definitely.
And when you're far from that, then.
We were, well, we were far from that, but I don't, I was watching like who was, the hot cocoa was getting people? So maybe we offer a cocoa, you know, as a, you know, further away or whatever, but hot cocoa and ice fishing and ice skating were the major things. And then, you know, people would kind of stop and chat on the way down, and like the fire truck. The kids were into the fire truck from the fire department, but.
Nice if we could think of an activity that would really draw people in.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the other thing is it's not all, it's not all locals.
No.
No, it was like people from New Haven, like people come from far away to, to do this. So I guess, I would do it again, I thought that it was, I thought it was fun, that weather was rough, but I would, I'm just trying to think of how we can do it in such a way that benefits us, so.
We got, we got some time.
Yeah, we have some time to think about it.
I know, I was trying to think about that too, when it first started, I was like, maybe we could do like a tree identification walk or something like that, like a winter tree ID thing, but I don't know how many people those would really, I think you need something like flashy. Like, we brought our stuffed beaver, our Texas bear beaver.
That was like very popular with the kids. I was, the beaver's popular.
But as a part of that too, we realized when we were setting up, we didn't have any kind of, we had to print a banner off of the plotter in the engineering department. And so the idea came up, well, maybe we might want to use conservation funds to buy a tabling banner.
Weatherproof thing.
Yeah, like a vinyl banner that says our logo on it and all that.
What do they cost?
So I originally went to Right Way Signs and was asking, could you pretty please make this a donation? And, and they said, I think you've exhausted your donation quota, which is, which is fine, I'm okay with that. But they said seventy dollars. So, I mean, we have, we have some money and that's the kind of money that we have. Honestly, we probably could buy it out of the, like, the land use office, like.
Like the general.
Like the, like the office supplies or equipment budget.
Okay.
We should just do that.
Yeah.
And then we don't even have to touch the conservation funds.
Okay.
Just buy it.
We're getting conservation funds from conveyance fees, right? Or no?
Conveyance fees, I've been doing some enforcement and asking pretty please that the, that it go to conservation. But mostly at this point, it's just, yeah, like when there's a subdivision, they have to like bond a certain amount for fee and lieu.
Do we get the fee and lieu?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it, but, but that's only when the lot transferred.
Right.
So it's like, you know.
Yeah.
Could be a long time, and it's dispersed over the entire subdivision, so it's not, if it's a big subdivision, it's not a ton, but. You know, that, if everyone's okay with that, we can go right ahead and just get, because I think it's, you know, it gives us opportunity to look more professional and, you know, recruit and all that.
The, the Winter Fest or whatever it's called, or are there other opportunities?
First Day?
First Day?
Uh, the, the planting that we just did, yeah, it would be, it would definitely be good to have a sign.
Yeah, all of our events, and we could, I mean, if the commission wants to table more, we could always, we could do that, you know.
That's what I was.
Yeah, there's like the, there's like the strawberry, the strawberry fest is this weekend, right? There's, like, the Franklin Street, like the, you know.
Actually, we used to do, we did really well, we built the, the trail, the trail network from street fair. Like, we were having trouble getting people to, that was one of Kim's babies, she wanted to have people kind of inventorying the trails and finding opportunities for other trails. And so there were all these walks that she was scheduling and nobody would show up, or they wouldn't show up on time, and, and, and then she just put out a sheet at one of the street fairs and got the, got that network together and then got them, the grant with the mentoring from the forest department, I think it was the Forest Service. But, do you know what I'm talking about? This, this guy came out and did, and helped them look at like where good trails would be and was like, Torrington is amazing because you have, in areas where you want trails, there's very few landowners. And, you know, to just have to, to deal with five landowners as opposed to hundreds is, is an amazing benefit. And, yeah, way, way easier. And then he, like, he just gave them all of this training over the course of two or three years. And I think he's still, he's still an advisor, but I can't remember, I don't remember the, the nitty gritty details, like what his name and where exactly, I think he was from, I think he was from the forestry service, but.
I was even thinking, because I went to the, the plant sale up at the fairgrounds for the Northwest Conservation District. So, you know, a few had tables up there, when I went into the barn or whatever, that could be.
Yeah, but.
And Dan could sit at that table.
The street fairs are good for us in terms of.
Can't walk around right now.
In terms of recognition, and I think, you know, just chatting with people about what, you know, what our projects would be. We had like some kind of raffle for bat boxes one year.
I was gonna say, we'd probably have to come up with maybe some like, either invest in some swag, you know, figure out how we might make something interactive, but we can do that over the course of the year and get the, you know, kind of ramp that up. But I think, I think it's a good idea, because to kind of get our, get the word out, get people interested in some of the things we're doing.
Yeah, I mean, also, if we have that partnership with Oliver Wocat, maybe they can do more than an owl lot, like maybe they can make us some bluebird boxes or some bat boxes.
Right.
That's what I was just gonna say, that was a big thing up at Topsmead and up on Mountain Road, we got a lot of bluebirds. Those bluebird boxes are a very popular, people love them.
Yeah. All right, let me just make a note. Okay.
Raccoons in my yard.
Another thing too is up, up there on Mountain Road, we got beautiful hummingbirds.
Do you?
I know there's a, there's a whole, people feeding the hummingbirds, and I mean, I know the very sensitive topic with bears right now, but the bluebird, the, sorry, the hummingbirds, it's wonderful to, you know, especially two-way. I saw, I was sitting there watching one today, while I was getting some equipment delivered.
I just got a new feeder, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get them, I also want to get some, what is that stuff called? Fuchsia, I really like fuchsia. Okay, so moving on to the tax sale open space update.
So this project was a baby of mine. It's honestly, it's probably been almost two years since we started this, but Torrington is unique in that our tax office is owned independently and is not a part of the city. We're the only municipality in the state that operates that way, where we have a private tax collector. And we ran into a property that I, actually Tom Candefor brought this up to me, he said, oh, there's this great property next to Machuga that's for sale, we really, it's in the tax sale, we should really try to get it. And I talked to Lana, who's the, I guess, CEO of the tax office. And she said, oh yeah, that's one of these properties that we just can't unload, it's landlocked. And we have a whole bunch of them, if the city would want to, you know, work out a deal so that you could take some of these properties that just can't, they just constantly go into the tax sale, the tax office is paying the city the taxes on them because of the weird arrangement, most municipalities, it would be like, the municipality would own it, but it would have the tax office, and then they could just kind of take the properties that they want. But we were kind of in a back and forth with the tax office over the past couple of years, they wanted some money for these properties. I just kept on having to say, well, we have no money, so if you don't want to pay taxes on these properties, we can take some of them from you, but we're not going to be able to buy any of these. And it kind of was like, just like, well, you gotta do something, and we're like, we have nothing, so we can't, we can't bargain here because there's really, we have nothing to offer you other than taking it off your tax burden. And so at the end of the day, we came to an arrangement where all these properties, for some of the nitty gritty, that the assessor mailed all of the abutters of these properties, something basically saying, if you take this property back on, it's your neighboring property, it'll never get developed because you'll own it. And they, she calculated what the additional tax burden would be, and it was always like miniscule because it was excess land and it wasn't, you know, wasn't buildable on its own, yeah, exactly. So she sent those to all the neighbors, we had this, we prepared for it, we had this big tax sale that was the May tax sale. And anything that we wanted that didn't go, they just pushed to the city. So some things we didn't end up getting because someone bid on them, which was a shame in a couple of cases, but we ended up getting about eight acres of property dispersed over the city. And I put together a little bit, what? Well, it happened in May, there's a six-month redemption period, so theoretically, the owner can come and like pay off all the back taxes on it and take the property back, but these are clearly people that have walked away, you know. Many of these properties, the former tax collector, Rob Crowe, owned. So they're like, they've been in the system for a long time. So anyway, some of them are just, you know, the, most of them are small, but they're just, at least in fair locations that makes sense in a conservation context. So this is point one six acres, Dan, I don't know if this is familiar to you, this is all surrounded by heritage property, but that little tiny piece there now is owned by the city. But it is kind of a nice inholding, right? Like, it's, it, and eventually we could, you know, if it made sense to transfer it to heritage, if, you know.
I'm sure we'd take it.
Yeah. But, you know, it couldn't really be developed anyway, it's tiny and it's on this road that was never constructed.
What is heritage? I don't know.
Oh, the land trust. Yeah.
The land trust.
Yeah. So this big piece here that my mouse is over, Heritage owns that and some of these too, some of these littler ones. And then one over here, right, you guys just got one donated.
Another one we got south of this.
Who funds Heritage?
Donations, which we will take quietly.
Wait, so, this is a dumb question, but why wouldn't? Why wouldn't you just want to go to the land?
We do, I think that the, what, the deal that we worked out with, oh, sorry, that, oh.
I can't hear.
The, the deal that we had to work out with, with the tax collector was basically, they were gonna try to recoup the money. So if Heritage wanted it directly, they would have had to bid on it. And so they would have at least had to spend a thousand dollars on it. Whereas in this case, we worked it out where the city would just take it to get it off them. So we may be an intermediary in some of these, but it was a way for them to kind of move in bulk a bunch of properties out of, that they were just bleeding money on, out of the tax office and at this point into our hands. And then we, you know, if, if, basically if we had a request from Heritage, or it kind of doesn't matter because Heritage, because the land trust is tax exempt and we're not paying taxes, so, and it's a small property. But if, say there was an access issue and they were gonna develop a trail system, it was gonna run through there, we could probably pretty easily do a transfer for like, nothing, you know.
Who owns the road that was never built?
It's a good question.
Kansas Street, is that another?
It's another, yeah. American Land Company special, so there was a company that went defunct years ago that did a bunch of subdivisions that didn't really make any sense around the turn of the century, I think, do you remember, Dan?
Somewhere out in the nineteen twenties.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right.
Around that era.
And, and they owned the property in fee, so they, so they owned the property, all these roads, and they basically fragmented all these parcels that can't be developed because they have no legal access, and they were, no roads were ever developed.
Some roads must have been developed, there's just a bunch that weren't, right?
Yeah, and it's, I think it's an open legal question, and it basically requires whoever's gonna develop it to get an attorney and try to, and figure it out, and we've had people figure it out.
So who owns it now?
It's in limbo.
A defunct company.
Defunct company, probably the city may have some rights to it.
Adjacent owners may have some rights to it.
To go because it was a public right of way. So if they haven't been paying taxes, wouldn't like the taxes, wouldn't the same thing happen as the other property?
It's a good question.
They have been dedicated to the city as, or declared on the subdivision as a right of way. I went to like one of these seminars for like two or three hours and came out more confused than when I went in. Discontinued, abandoned, I was like, oh man.
Basically, we tell people, get an attorney, have them provide, like, have them do an assessment of the specific situation you're in and need to develop property, and our attorney will review it, and if it makes sense, our office will like go along with it.
If I'm not mistaken, we use that, we use Kansas Street to get back to our property.
Yep.
Heritage land. We follow that and go back there.
Is there a dirt road back there now on that, or is?
Yeah, really, you know, folks who live.
This house?
That house, yeah, right there.
Yeah.
They, we think we've got the two, one of those two properties that are just south of it.
Yeah, like one of these.
Yeah, I think maybe.
Yeah.
And we may get the other one that's over.
The little guy?
Yeah, one in there. But yes.
It's kind of interesting, these three little landlocked properties that are all the same size, they must all.
Well, the way, the way Jeremy's explained this to me is that they did these big mass subdivisions and people would mix and match, and so they would like buy three of these tiny lots and make their custom lot based on those fragments. But then obviously none of them got built out because it didn't make any sense in the field.
If you go down by Hesse Road, that whole.
Right in here.
Yeah, down, even farther.
Uh, why can't on this?
Okay, all right, down in there.
Yeah.
All, yeah, let me see.
I actually have another slide with those.
All that to the left there, that was all cut up in the same mess. That whole area was also cut up in the same way, and it's still a mess.
Yeah, and that's, and that was one of the people, so this big property here, owned by Andrew Nargy, he went to court and was able to figure out a way to assemble these parcels in a way that he could gain access to this big one here, but it was a. But it was a, he owns most of this mess in here and, you know, it's, it is a mess. Uh, Christine can tell you too. We still deal with it day in and day out. People are calling on these and we just say, get, get a lawyer. Um, but anyway, so this, this is back to this piece. I'm just gonna fly through these other par- properties. It's, you know, um. The best part about this is the land trust lands surrounding it.
Yep.
Uh, this is a little block, assemblage. We picked up similar situation. You know, landlocked parcels, here's the paper road here or the, you know, American Land Company road here. And they're all out here by the highway there, but it's this nice big block of forest that goes way back and it's basically been protected because of. This messed up subdivision, I think. Um, and there's some slopes. It's, it's definitely has some topography in here. But this ended up being, what, about two acres of nice mature forest land. Um. In the watershed of this like kind of complex of the Machuga properties here. So picked up those ones. This is one, um, so this is state owned property here. This is uh Sunny Brook and this was a nice way to just kind of add on to some state property there. It's all slope. This is Newfield Road. Um, so kind of, you know, I think the benefit might be that you pre- prevent someone from cutting a huge swath down steep, steep slopes for a view. Um, but it builds off of this kind of state owned land there. Um, the neighbor did actually, one of these neighbors bought the wrong piece of property. There's a couple of these for sale and they wanted this one to extend this, one of their properties. And uh, they bid on like this one and it didn't make any sense. So I think the tax office wants us to do a swap there so we can, you know.
That's funny.
I don't see a problem with.
No.
Take, with doing that, if that's, if it'll get it on the tax rolls, it's not gonna really be developable anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Um. This was the original parcel that we wanted out of this whole thing. So I would have been happy if we just got this. This is the Machuga, so this is the park, uh, park, um, that we had that field visit two years ago.
Yeah.
Um. Right, so we, so we came up here and then this two point seven acres, this is owned by the city. This is owned by the land trust. This rail corridor is owned by the city. So it adds to this nice block. This is owned by the state up here too. Um, yeah, over sixty acres, kind of adds another three acres almost to that. So I think that's a real huge win. There's a nice stream that runs in here that comes from up, up here. Um.
Who owns to the right of Machuga Road?
Uh.
Uh, the, when it makes that L and it, and it's running parallel to Route Eight.
This?
No, to the, to the, to the right. Go down towards Route Eight.
Uh, oh, to Route Eight, which.
Yes, but now go up past our two point seven acres.
This?
Yeah, who wants that?
That's all part of, that's.
The city.
Yeah, that's all part of this main parcel here that goes all the way back. So. Um, so yeah, it's really nice and it's, you know, not high quality mixed forest from when I remember us being back in there. Um.
It is not high quality?
It is.
Oh, it is high quality.
It's nice, mature, like hemlock and hardwoods, not a lot of invasives. Um, this is another, this is actually an interesting one. It's another rail line. Um, this is part of the old trolley line. So this is owned by the city now and there was hopes to turn, to do a, a loop trail. So this is where the Sioux Grossman trails here. And so the idea was to come up Harris Drive, connect up with this. And then it keeps on going all the way to Machuga Lane Road. And then you could have like a little walking, you know, this, this is the only house on Machuga. So there's no traffic. Have it come back down and meet up with the Sioux Grossman. It's like a little mile and a half loop that someone could do. So it's, that's kind of always in the background for potentially developing that. But this would extend it. And I walked down at once and it, it ends at the Jewish cemetery, which I don't know if they want. Public, you know, accessing from the back that way, but you know, it's, it does have a destination point at the end of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think this is owned by the state. So it's like, yeah, terminate here. The state right away. And then this is the Jewish cemetery property here. So, um, and we almost picked up this too, but Connecticut Light and Power. Wanted it. And so the mayor asked that we just let it go to them, which seemed to make sense. They, they own this part, property right here.
Okay.
Um, this is a good one. I really like this one. It's point three nine acres. This three point eleven acres is open space. So it adds right to this piece here. And we did that inspection. I know Christine was at least on that. Jeremy, I don't remember who else was on that or if Dan was on it. It was, this is uh Ford Lane. We accessed off of, I think Ford Lane. And then we walked up the river and it was actually a really beautiful ravine.
That was beautiful.
And, and then it kind of terminates up here. And this is a big, you know, hundred fifty plus acre property that's RRC. That's, um.
What is it?
Our, well, RRC, now that you kind of know what that is.
Restricted residence.
Yeah, it's a, we, it's a, it's a, it's a special zone for, for residential development.
It's.
But, but there's probably a good opportunity for open space dedication out of that if that ever does get. Um, built out. But anyway, this is a nice, just a nice contiguous piece of uh forest with the, with the river. You know, adjacent river and flood plain. This is a great one. Not really necessarily a conservation property, but this is the bowling alley property that burned down. Um, years ago, this is Walgreens here. This is the Noggetuck River. Um, so this is Main Street.
That now.
We have that now.
And we were thinking about that for the food forest.
Right, but we didn't own it.
About contamination.
Well, we were, we were thinking about this point two seven acre one.
Oh, really?
That, that had contamination. That is owned by the city. But that has, there's like rumors of contamination there. So.
Oh.
Um, but this one here, I don't know what the deal, probably is. Yes.
Okay, I was confusing those two.
Yeah. So that one, I, I think that uh our economic development department is interested in exploring. Making it into another plaza and have it be like, because it's, it overlooks the river there too. There's a, there's a big retaining wall here that looks in actually pretty good shape. So they cleared that and put like trees in and made it kind of a forested plaza.
Could do a food forest there. There's.
Yeah. I don't, I, I don't, we, yeah, we'd have to, obviously there would, there'd be a lot of scoping to figure out what the city might do there. But at the very least, it's, it's publicly owned now. So.
Because look, I mean, that, if they put like, like, like some kind of sidewalk sort of thing, is that the, what they want to do?
I think like a Franklin Plaza type thing.
Like stores, like retail?
No.
No.
Ammonad or whatever.
Like the plaza part of it.
Okay.
Where they, yeah.
Okay.
With like trees and boxes.
River, then you have whatever that edge is facing south.
Mm-hmm.
That's a, that is a, I mean, we just planted edge trees that were, that were edible.
Yeah, I mean, there, I'm sure there would probably, I would hope there would be some kind of public. There'd be some kind of process to, to like solicit input and develop something, but we would have a better position than most.
Yeah.
As far as advising on that. Um, at least for like visioning what it might be, because no one really, it's like, it could be something cool there. I think economic development wants to kind of promote the, the row of kind of nicer Hispanic businesses that have been going into this plaza here. And replacing some of the nail salons. There's like a new um, ice, ice cream place. There's the deli that's going in there. There's the Ecuadorian store looks really nice. Um.
I heard a bakery or something.
Bakery.
Yeah.
So there's a lot going in there. Um, but anyway, I just, that was through this process, but the mayor wanted that earmarked. Because she really, you know, she wanted that piece.
Is that all relatively flat through there?
Yep, completely flat.
Yeah, that's totally.
And there's a retaining wall that like overlooks. So it actually could be a really cool vantage if there was like a retaining wall with a little fence. And you could look down into the river and um, it's, it, it could be pretty cool. Um. And then, so this is, so that, so that was all the pieces that, that we ended up getting in this deal.
Nice.
These pieces, this is what Dan was talking about of the rest of that kind of nonsense here. None of this is built out at all. Um. Because, yeah.
Sad.
It's just, so it's just, they're just landlocked, you know, pieces, most of them owned by Andrew Nargy.
And there's like a river going right through.
No, it's a hill.
Oh, really? It's with this dark stuff?
Um, I think it's just, I think they cleared it. I think there was some partial clearing and it's like invasives, you know, kind of. Recolonized a little bit or, or maybe Andrew Nargy had logged it. I don't know.
Okay, so Nargy owns all of this?
Most of these are owned by him. So these properties didn't end up selling, going in the sale. So there's like another two acres that I think is probably. There can unload them. I think it's worth picking up. It, this area is identified in the P O C D as a, like a. Notable scenic area, because you can kind of, when you're on two oh two, it's this big hill. You don't really notice it until I'm sure if there was like houses all over it. But it's kind of a nice little knoll that over, that, and this would help protect some of the, the view. Of that at, at the, at minimum. And it's adjacent to a lot of other forested area. So. Um, I would go back to them and say, hey, you didn't, they didn't, they weren't able to sell these and we didn't initially ask for them.
Okay.
But for the next tax sale, if you're all supportive of it, I could go back and then say, if no one buys these again, we'll take them.
One hundred percent support on my end for sure. I love this. I, this is like the only way we can get land.
I know.
Grant.
Well, no one else, the, the one property weirdly enough that was bought in the, in the tax sale, if you look at my cursor, see this?
Yep.
That sold.
That was the guy who came in, right?
No, different.
Person?
This, this property sold and all these other, like you can't even build anything, even if you.
That's a.
Got it. I was like, why didn't you buy all of them? And then you could actually have a big block.
Yeah.
Maybe, you know, try to get this like, like condemn access over Westover Road and like put something.
That's weird. You're right. That's weird.
This is all sloopy too. When I say a hill, I mean, this is all steep in here. So it would be very expensive to develop it as it's shown here. Where you put, you know, houses all around there. It just, it doesn't make sense. They, they laid these out without any consideration of topography at all.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but anyway, that was my, my little presentation that I probably spent too much time putting together, but.
Nice work. That's all I have to say. That was a, that was good.
Yeah, it worked out well. Um, yeah.
Okay, uh, solar proposal, West Hill Road.
Okay, so there, um, on West Hill Road, uh, kind of at the end, almost to the New Hartford line. There's been a, a new proposed solar array, three megawatt. I believe it's about twelve, nineteen. Less than twenty acres of disturbance for putting panels in.
Right, it's nineteen point something.
Nineteen, yeah.
I don't remember what it was.
Um, that sounds right. Uh, so what I did was, um, we had put in these comments on the Lover's Lane. Um, proposal. I uh, and then I forwarded the comments on to Jeremy. Lifer, city planner, so he could incorporate them into planning and zoning's comment. So we basically went in with planning and zoning as an advisory commission to them. So I did the same type of thing, except this time we have a nat- the natural resources inventory that was presented last time. And I took that and I created a checklist. So I'll share that with you now. It actually was very helpful in organizing my. Um, my thoughts. So basically just, you know, I designed, I did it in a question format, but. They go in order for the layers to click on and off on the natural resources inventory. So I pulled up the parcel. And I went through the G I S and I just clicked on everything and saw what intersected. And that allowed me to answer these questions. So, um. So uh, let me just show you what the property looks like for some tiny bit of context. Um, give me a second. Yep, so this is West Hill Road. No, it's on an adjacent property. Um. So this, this is a little weird too. So here's the boundary of Torrington. So this is New Hartford. This is Torrington. The property is this one. All of these parcels are not really parcels at all. It's one property.
The subdivision.
It's an old subdivision.
Yeah, so it, it was filed when it, but it has expired. So this does not exist, but it was planned. And so there was.
Go out a little bit more.
Yep. Yeah, so this is Torringtonford Street. This is the Pine Woods exit. Um, and then West.
Yeah. Oh, where Coman is? Yeah, yeah, well, Coman is right up in here. Yeah.
So you kind of got to imagine it's all one, one parcel.
Mm-hmm.
This whole then, really a terrible subdivision, I think. Don't mind saying that. It very, if you saw what the house looked like on it, it's crazy. It's like, you know, all these private driveways and. It's just set up in a really weird way. Um, but anyway, what they're proposing is to put that solar with the utility easement here. You see pretty easily, very gas line. All the disturbance will be on this side. All of this is.
A conservation after.
Which is a better deal than this subdivision as far as a pure. Perspective. Um, because they would then develop way down into those areas. But anyway, that's, that's some context for it. I can go back to them, but just to run through this a little bit. Is the project within a public drinking water supply? Um, yes. The, the, the name progress will wonder that. Um, they'll act for ten of all for the onsite, um, properties of P ninety current use. Uh, forest, for, for forestry on sites, they are giving tax breaks for forestry. Um, are there important agricultural soils there? Yes, there's some pine, there's some. Um, special state tax soils that don't get as much protection, but there is this small bit of pine soil. Um, uh, there's a diversity database record from deep, it's a little bit upstream. Um, having the water force that is nowhere near the project area. To property. Um, this, I think the biggest issue on this property conservation wise is that it's been in this big. Core forest block, which means core forest in area that's at least three hundred feet away from an edge. So, um, like a road or a field or anything like that. So it has specific species that require that. Really, um, buffer and forest interior. So the deepest, I tend to really concerned about. Fragmenting or breaking that up into, you know.
But that's defined by H V A and not by deep.
Yeah, that's, and, and I do have to, um, I'm using H V A. Essentially the deep. Deep con clear has the layer that's the same. I haven't put that intensively, but they use the same size characters. But so, but I cannot do that. I can just. But anyway, that's, so that's a big downside of the project. I mean, at the other side of the coin. If it was developed into a presidential subdivision, it would be probably just as much a comp more. Um. But.
What, what are the odds of that being actually developed into a subdivision?
They could be subdivided again. Yeah, different changes. I don't know what the market is.
Yeah, I mean, this was, these were gonna be like really.
Oh, yeah.
It's in that watershed, something towards in the watershed of the Navy Hall. That's specific zoning district.
Yeah.
So they need extra big lots for that.
Watershed protections of.
Yeah.
Do solar arrays make noise or are they quiet?
They can be very quiet.
They're quiet. I'm going by them.
Yeah, people always, I feel like they heard planes in there.
That's, I keep hearing claims and I'm, I'm driven by the, I mean, the one I was, I've been closest to is the one at Manchester Community College. They have a whole section on the right side of um, the road, the entrance to the college and it seems completely quiet. But again, I've been, I've been hearing like they're so much noisier than you expect.
Is there like what buzzing?
That's what I assume they must.
Driving.
Or maybe it's, is it the rain hitting the, I have no, I don't know what they're.
I'm doing now.
Oh, you're doing it like that?
How much noise to the?
Don't buy them on bikes.
And you don't hear anything, right? Yeah, okay.
Stand there.
You know, you just never know whether information is legit or not.
Um, so resources, I just know that there was still a law there. Um, and they try to work around dozens of possible. Um, but soils, there are, when I'm deciding, um, again, as a reminder, these projects, we have no regulatory authority over them. So our, yeah, regulate the use of. can't regulate the use of their, but we wouldn't even think of permanent on this because it's outside of the regulation. Um, but deep reviews the plans as a standard. Yeah, and and pretty much everything else checked now. So I mean, I think it's actually, um, others that break up.
Of the core forest, yeah.
That's the big, that's the big issue as far as. There.
Who who assesses like?
You have to put it on a piece of paper. Yeah, I don't, it, nothing works except like paper.
Who who determines like if there are any um species in the area that are at risk or things like that?
So deep, so the the. They had their own study, they followed by experts on rules. Um, weapons, obviously, um, looking at it as a state records, they did archaeological studies on it. It was pretty extensive um material. It's all on the site council website, so I'm sure if you want to look at it, it's document number five three two. Um, but it's a search on Torrington and West Hill Road within Sites Council, it'll show up right away. I was going down around all this and I, you know, I didn't waste too much time, it's a day or the moment or advisory. And and honestly, I was reading these comments and they were.
Pretty much the same.
Pretty much the same. I tried to add some.
Something different. I think it's just really important um to always comment, um, because the, you know, you're, even though we have no jurisdiction or anything, when um neighbors are upset about these or the community is upset about the solar projects and you haven't made comments, it, they they read that as apathy.
Right.
So just think as a policy.
Also, you looked at it.
Yeah, you you just need to make comments.
So using that uh, that uh checklist, which I hope, you know, we can use for all of our review. Um, and it was really easy with the with the natural resources inventory. I put together this sort of like what we just talked about as far as where there's, you know, the issues at hand, um, real, and then recommendations. They were mostly technical. I like silt sacks, a catch base or some kind of catch basin protection, because when, when all those big vehicles are tracking out onto West Hill Road, like they're gonna, they're gonna drag a bunch of sediment onto the road and it's all gonna end up in the areas they want to protect down in the water, you know, the river down the hill. So, um, I recommended that. Um, uh, ink, the tracking pad is only fifty feet long. I'm a big proponent of lots of tracking pad. Because you know, it's gonna get just fill, I I don't know if you know what tracking pad is, but just just gravel. For those that don't like, like large diameter stone to knock the dirt off of the tires before they get onto the road. And so the more you have knocking that, and then and it fills up over time, right? When there's trucks going back and forth, it inevitably fills up and isn't maintained properly, so.
Stops working after.
Right, and then you have to tell them to replace it and, you know, we have no control over this anyway. Um, the nice thing is this, this will be monitored by the Conservation District probably. Uh, I don't, Dan, do you happen to know?
I don't remember this one. I've seen, I don't remember.
Okay, there's a certain like megawatt cutoff that they have an MOU with the state that they do the environmental monitoring for these projects. I don't know, this is three megawatt. It may be more than that. Um, but if they're on the case, that's great, because they, they're they're good. Um, and the consultant, the the solar company's gonna have to hire their own environmental consultant to do monitoring anyway. So uh, at the Litchfield one on Rossi Road, they had two different environmental monitors and it was, I mean, it was a huge project and they really did actually need that level of monitoring, because they were constantly having like, uh, the basins were failing and there was, there's all these issues that were happening and they were there weekly, identifying and troubleshooting with and and and, you know, ultimately it was, you know, it stabilized. It was that year that was like two years ago, right, where we had the insane amount of rain and it was just.
Like this year.
Yeah, yeah, maybe that's what we're shaping up for. Um, protect stone walls. Um, in the operations plan, a recommendation to add grazing as a preferred method. They did have some really convoluted, like, they're like, the mowing shall occur during all of these specific times and the equipment should be cleaned for invasive ins- uh invasive seeds every time it's used and all this stuff that I'm like, that's never gonna. They're gonna send some guy and it's gonna get mowed when it gets mowed, you know? Um, but I like the idea, uh, everyone seemed to like the idea of having it in that act, an active agriculture.
Yeah, I mean, to me, like the, you know, one of the big things that would stick in my craw, particularly with the one that was up on the Litchfield line, was the loss of agricultural land. But if you're gaining agricultural land from it and having local food being produced, it completely outweighs the negatives for me. Come on in, George.
Very formal.
George, George Craig arrived at seven twenty six PM. No problem. Don't be sorry.
At a nominating, they come on that nominating committee.
Okay, so we were talking about the West Hills uh Road solar project.
Um, and then the last recommendation was just, I did this on the last one in their de- decommissioning plan, just calling specifically out soil erosion control, because they talked about like kind of regrading the whole site and all this stuff and it's like, I mean, maybe that's just a given, but doesn't hurt to have it in the plan itself that that would be a part of their, you know, that they would have a soil erosion control plan made up as a part of that process as well. Um, but yeah, that's it. So.
All right.
I'm uh, I'm, so my next steps here, if everyone, I don't know if every, if anyone wants to like look at the application and potentially suggest anything else, or if you want me to just go ahead and refer this to to Jeremy, um, kind of up to you. I can wait probably like a couple days. Um, but it it actually has to be, probably has to be in by, by next week, it does, by the fifth, so.
I think you should go ahead and and hand this over to Jeremy.
Yeah, okay. Do you have any, there is, public comment is is on the fifth, so um, I think it's at like six thirty. Um, I can share that with everyone if you'd like the the public hearing on that. Um.
I'm curious, like with the decommissioning, um, so these things have a life expectancy, is that the idea? And then then they'll have to be removed. They have a contract with Eversource that's twenty years and and they have to have a program. The solar company has to be in a program with Eversource in order to continue the project. So it has the twenty year contract with the possibility of being extended to forty years for another twenty years. Um, and then after that, if there's no program, it has to be decommissioned. And what happens if the solar company goes belly up after the years?
If the solar company goes belly up, they would just go first, they and another solar company would purchase them.
We haven't hit that point yet.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I'm just thinking of um.
Well, all of the, all of the residential solars, many of those companies went belly up.
Right, right. So so decommissioning is great, but if there's no money, if the company's bankrupt or is whatever, you know, how, then what happens?
I wonder if they bond it.
That's what I'm wondering. It would, it would be great if they did bond.
I mean, they addressed that at the, at the um Planning and Zoning Commission meeting when they came in informationally and um, it's in the, it's in the minutes. I put it in the minutes. I can't remember the exact thing, but basically she was just like, it would just go on the market for sale and be purchased by another company. But there, but then she assured, um, you know, she had uh information that that was uh, you know, based on the the health of their company.
Uh, that's where we, that's the same problem we have with industrial sites. Who does the cleanup? We're paying for the cleanup. The state is paying for the cleanup.
Yes, but those sites, how old are those sites? Like, there was no.
And then, then we're left with all these things, you know, litter all over the land.
I know, I'd be interested to know if they bonded them. That would be, that would be a very nice uh, but I, but I I I wonder if that amount of capital.
Question in your, in your.
Yeah, what is, what is the lifespan of a panel? Does anybody know?
I think it depends on panel, but.
Is there any toxicity involved in a panel?
Yeah.
Yeah? There is. I don't know what exactly it is, but there is some. I don't know how much, but I've heard that there is.
All right, so I'll go ahead and uh, and submit these comments if everyone's okay with that. And then it'll be out of our hands and into the vault. All right.
Okay, moving on to old business, the Jigs Donahue Food Forest debrief.
I thought that was one of the most feel-good uh, um, events we've done.
Yeah, I thought it was. Very successful, I think. Yeah, yeah, nice turnout from the public and um, yeah.
And then just the, what we got accomplished in in those, it wasn't even three hours, two hours and it was done.
Yeah. I have some photos from that. I didn't know.
I do too. You don't happen to have your.
If you want to email or send me a link, I have it in a, in a drive. Maybe I'll just give everyone permission. I have a Google Drive set up in the Torrington. Torrington has a, like a Gmail account that I use the Google Drive on. Um.
Yeah, because I have a bunch of photos too. I've been meaning to catch you and.
Yeah, like the easiest way that I can get it from my phone to you would be ideal.
And I will say, this is a great superlative in my mind. It was posted on the mayor's Facebook page and they were universally good comments.
Really?
And there was like nineteen of them.
Wow.
So.
It just looked like such a wholesome event.
Well, that does ne- that never stops people on Facebook. Are you kidding?
What do you, what do you think the difference was?
I don't know. Mary Bagnas, she didn't even comment on it. I don't even know how that's possible. Uh, she's, she's, yeah. Um, she's a a frequent commenter on these things.
Negative commenter.
Um, but yeah, I don't know. So anyway, I I thought it went, it went great. I went there today actually and it still looks beautiful.
Yeah.
We have, um, I'm forgetting her name now, but I sent her an email. We have a woman who volunteered to water the, water them, take care of them over the year. Um, we haven't needed it since because it's been regularly irrigated and um.
Ideal.
I know Lauren was really stressed out because of the food truck. So her worry was that there wouldn't be, you know, she knows that people RSVP and then don't come.
Mm hmm.
So she, you know, they've got plenty of RSVPs, but then she was just like, they're, you know, they're not gonna show up. And uh, and she was just really horrified at at asking a food truck to come and thinking that they wouldn't make any money.
Mm hmm.
So that was when um she said that like everybody in the office, her supervisors all could, could uh feel the vibe of her uh, of her stress. And they were like, just, just feed everybody there, you know, just feed.
Oh, so they'd already told that, they'd already said that.
They had said that it had to just be, originally, they had said it had to be for at advance participants only. And she was just like, this is so, you know, this is just really wrong and we're not gonna get enough people and we're gonna screw the food truck guy. And uh, and and then they were just like, go ahead and use, we have the vouchers, we have the money for it, just feed everybody.
Wonderful. Yeah, I was wondering about that, because, yeah, my parents came and they went to go buy something and it was, they're like, oh, it was uh, he said it was on the house, you know, and I was like, is he like donating this? Like, what's going on here? But he was getting paid still.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yep.
Um, but yeah, so um, everyone, you know, it's there now. We have our food. So, um, yeah.
Have we taken the uh, the the director of Park and Recs over there to see it, the guy that turned us down? I mean, it would be a nice thing for him to see if we could.
What was it? It was the commission.
Yeah, it would be more like, like, well, it's like, do we really wanna jump back in there?
I mean, you wanna do more, I mean.
Completely unmoved. I I can just tell you that, you know.
Let it, let it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. It was very, yeah, I think the thing, yeah.
You know. Well, and you know, the thing was, is actually it's a great location. I think the other location would have been a fantastic location too, but I don't feel bad about this location.
No, I think this is probably a better location.
It has so much going for it.
Yeah.
Including the fact that Mary Gilfoyle is so involved.
Yeah.
In that, and she has such a great rela- she's the master gardener who does the vegetable garden. And she has a fantastic relationship with a lot of players in the city who all help her out and um better than we, the city, have with ourselves. So I just think that, you know, we couldn't have asked for a better situation.
And she can keep an eye on it. She's there all the time and like knows us now. And if so, if there's vandalism or some kind of issue, there was vandalism. I went there, they uh, someone had spray painted on those like beautiful granite steps that go up to.
Oh, really?
You know, but uh, but they didn't vandalize our tiny little fence, so. Um, but yeah, no, I I I agree. I think it was great. And, you know, my recommendation is that we just kind of focus on this for now, like, don't think about expanding, you know, do maintenance on this, think about how we might wanna, you know, do future events there. Um, yeah, but thank you all for everyone who was there. It was, it was really cool. And yeah, this was at a, yeah, Jigs or Donahue Park. Uh, Jeff, I don't know if you know where that is. It's uh, it's on.
East Pearl Street, the little green church that was converted to um housing. Is it Anthony's Pizza?
Behind Lark, really?
Yeah, behind, behind Lark and kind of at the intersection.
Near Street, I mean, you go around the corner.
Go around the corner.
I'm just trying to think of a place that you might know.
Back to Lark.
Yes, yeah, exactly. Um, so it was, it ended up being, yeah, there's already a community guard back there. This is a, so we planted a bunch of fruit trees um and bushes and stuff like that, that, you know, the idea is for it to be open to the public to pick and to, and for the commission to help, you know, coordinate maintenance, but have it be really minimal maintenance, because they're kind of native fruit trees and bushes that can, you know, get along by themselves at least a little bit. Um, uh, but there already is a community garden there and they donate their produce to Friendly Hands and and they're really involved in the community. So, you know, even if we don't have people collecting all the fruit, which was one of the worries of some of our site, that there'd be stuff on, left on site and it would bring bears in and all that. Um, in this case, we can, you know, we could have an event and like, you know, collect all the blueberries and donate them, you know, and it it could be a really, really cool project, so.
And then I also thought it was um, uh, you know, encouraging that it seemed like uh the Parks Department or Public Works was willing to eventually start uh lowering the tree, the the height of the trees.
Yeah, topping some of those on the edge, you know, and that would be the only help. Because there's, there's not a lot of light.
We planted, but to get us, to get us more sun.
Oh, that would be nice.
Yeah.
That that's gonna happen or they were just talking about it?
They've, they they, they, they did prune, they did, since we were there last, they did some lemon. Um.
And so it opened it up this, you know, the, opened the width up a little bit.
Mm hmm. Parks was really, has been gr- not parks, um, Public Works has been really great. And we basically just go around parks now and we just work right with Public Works and they, they brought out a a porta potty, they got us all the mulch, you know, we have a great relationship with them.
Um, okay, so next is the owl boxes.
Yeah, so I mean, I talked with the uh, with the contact that Karen had connected me with and I'm forgetting his name now, but. But.
Oliver Wilkett, right?
Yeah, at Oliver Wilkett to try to get some owl boxes uh made. This is, yeah, we're, this, it's a little bit of a mayor's initiative stemming from the rat problem in installing some owl boxes as habitat, but also to help with the rat problem a little bit. Um, so, you know, the idea was to reach out to Oliver Wilkett, because they're the owls, um, essentially.
Mascot.
Is it there, is it actually their mascot or?
Well, they, that's their symbol, right, isn't it?
Is, yeah, it's the owl and it's, yeah. So um, yeah, they 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 said they were totally down. The only thing that we have to do is we have the plans to give to them, but we would need to supply the wood.
Mm hmm.
So.
And we realized that it was a half sheet of plywood per owl box. Like, we thought it was not, that it wasn't plywood, but it is.
Right, so, you know, we could potentially look for, that's kind of an exercise in us looking for donations. Again, whether it's going to, I mean, we kind of already went to the big box stores.
I wonder how Iflin, they seemed so.
It seemed so nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, Iflin donate, well, donate, they gave us a cardboard for mulching. Uh, but they were very nice to work with. It was, it was a byproduct for them, but uh.
They were using them though. They were using them as shields for their, for their.
Plywood, yeah. So, and I mean, when you go in there, the amount of wood that they have in that store, I was like, whoa, I haven't, the the big warehouse, one of them. Um, but yeah, it might be worth asking. Um, because if we don't, if we're not able to get it as a donation, we'd have to either solicit for someone to fund it.
Right, but it was only like fifty, fifty dollars a sheet, right?
How many we?
Not that expensive for a full sheet of plywood.
Or, you know.
Only one sheet.
Plywood, how thick? They're three quarter or?
It was probably a thinner one, it was probably a three quarter inch plywood.
Plans, I think it was three nine.
Was it?
Imagine that.
I think it was three quarter inch.
Right, to donate. I mean, that's not a big ask.
Uh, one or two, probably just start, we probably just do it as like a, like two, so that, you know, you could have two kids that are working on it.
One sheet of plywood?
Basically one sheet of plywood, yeah.
Oh, I'll donate.
There's gotta be two by fours in there too, right? Like for the frame. It's all plywood, huh?
Was it half a sheet?
Do we, I have, I have the plan in my folder. Do we, I have, I have the plan in my folder, but I was too lazy to go up and get it.
Like screws and stuff, those?
Hardware too, hardware too. That is.
That can get costly too.
I was just buying plywood, so like the thicker, the three quarters, depending if it's a CDX or a three eights, it goes from twenty eight to thirty five, thirty eight dollars depending. But it, you know, that was lowest price.
Right. So I mean, we could also buy, I mean, we do have enough money in our budget to, to buy it as well, but it, it could be a nice way to partner if someone's willing to let go with a, a couple of sheets of plywood. It looks good on them that we get, you can promote them.
What was the guy's name? Was it Dale? Dale Ifland in the?
Yeah.
We have his number now.
Yeah. You know, I didn't, uh, in the Facebook posting, I don't remember if I called out, because we, in the Earth Day, we called out all the businesses like we had talked about, right? We said like, you know, we listed all of them there. I'm not sure that I did that with the.
Done it for the.
I should have done that for them, but I think I thought about it.
Again, and we should maybe, when we have a meeting there or something, we take some photos and, and do another, make it an excuse to do another.
I think I thought about it and it was just like picturing me like dumpster diving and these people to get, to get some of it. And I was like, ah, you know, but it doesn't hurt to thank people.
No. Well, I mean, I can also send letters out. I've been, I, I am, I've been kind of busy, but I've been meaning to send something to Ed Advance officially and, you know, so we could send a letter to, to Ifland thanking them.
Yeah. But yeah, so I mean, so basically that we'd be shooting for the semester, the fall semester and we could probably, so if we were able to get.
We want it by September.
Yeah, so we'll probably want to shoot, I, I don't know if we want to, you know, start that outreach now or, or maybe, maybe look at the plans and come up with a material list and then figure out, you know, again, for things like the hardware, like confirm that it's just the plywood sheet that we need. You can just kind of start figuring that stuff out and then, and then make the ask.
And then solicit?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, is anything more on the owl boxes? All right, so we're at staff update, open space inventory.
Um, so yeah, so we're getting into the, the summer months. We took kind of a hiatus from the open space inventory, which I think made sense with all the outreach project. All the community events we had going on. We're at the Greenbrier subdivision open space where we couldn't get in. I sent a letter to the, the new owner and I never heard anything back from them.
I think that that means permission. I'm going to take that as permission. I think that that's how we should enter.
So, yeah, I mean, I can never be a proponent of trespassing in my capacity. I don't feel, but, um, but yeah, I mean, I think we could, I think we could more reasonably.
I know.
Put something on the record that.
Clear a road for us.
Well, that's, I feel like our exist, we have an existing right of way.
Right.
It's impenetrable. We could send them a letter or something being like, if you do not clear it in nice terms.
Right.
If you don't clear it for us, we'll clear it ourselves. And maybe, maybe Public Works will hear that. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. I'm, I mean, we have to be able to access our property and.
I think they'd say, great, clear it yourself. I just think we should demand that they clear it for that, you know, it's a right of way. It's supposed to be.
Right. I mean, we could just, I can put strong language in something and just say, I can look at the agreement again. I don't remember if it says that it's there.
Of a right, of a clearing, do you need five feet wide? I mean.
Yeah, I think the easement is.
Twenty feet and we only need five feet, you know, I mean.
Right.
Wouldn't want to make them clear.
They could just let us walk in the other.
Just have their, have them hire a, a, like a cheap landscaping guy with a brush cutter, you know, and they can go at it for half a day, you know?
They're the same people that didn't reply to you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you send them a letter saying that if, if, if they don't respond, giving us permission to enter the other way, that we're going to have to request that they clear a path for us in the easement?
I can include that in there, just being like, you know, we'd like to, we'd like to just access through this easier area, but if we can't, you know, per our agreement, we.
To, yeah.
To, to, to.
We're going to request you clear our, our right of way.
Because they might. Longer than request.
They might not be replying out of any type of malice or anything. They might just, it's, it's like, oh yeah, and they throw it on their desk or.
I agree. I, I think that's what it is.
Now, if it's like, oh, I could either write a letter or send you an email, or I have to now hire someone to clear a path. It's a lot easier just to say, hey, yes.
Right.
Or we could write on their, your, to a certified letter and if they sign for it, we say, you know, your, your non-response to this gives us legal permission to access via this. I don't know how defensible that is, but, um.
Probably not, but.
All right, well, I, what, what do you think? I mean, I can do, I, I can send a letter that's, you know, asking them to clear it.
Is that the last?
And say, if you let us go the other way, we'll do that, but otherwise we're going to.
The, the length that they need to clear?
Probably about like three hundred feet.
We weren't even on our land when we thought we were.
I know, then they're probably going to have a hard time figuring out where it is too. It was probably not more than five hundred feet, right?
No, I don't think so.
Got so tangled up.
So the, this entity, um, who, who are they?
They're developers. They, they've, they've done other, no. Yeah. So I'll, I'll send that letter. Um, do you, would you like to all see it before I send it and circulate it?
Always, always fun to read it, but whatever you want to do. Is this, is this the last one on our list?
No.
So should we schedule an easier one?
Sure.
Okay.
I know, I'm all.
What were we doing? We were doing Thursday so that you could be there. Right? What were we doing like Thursday?
Well, because we were saying like, can you get out on Thursday? Like.
I don't think I can, but.
Yeah.
But I don't have to be there, do I?
No, no. It's up to, I mean, it's either I, I'm not there or you're not there.
I think you're, I think you're more valuable.
Okay.
In terms of, uh.
Thank you. Uh, no, I, I.
Navigating, navigating maps and stuff, you know, I'm better.
No, I understand what you're saying. Um, yeah, okay. Well, I'm, I'm happy to do Thursday afternoons. That's my preference for sure.
So, uh, do we want to pick a, a Thursday in June?
I know you, how, is your new job easier for this?
Uh, well, I am working from home like three days a week, so if it's a work from home day, I could do like five, you know?
Five is fine, I think.
Yeah, so that's when we were doing it was like at five, I think.
Yeah.
So I don't know, uh, people want to pull out their phones and take a look at what you have on, um, in June?
June's pretty busy. The only one I'd be able to do would be the fifth.
Okay.
Fifth is going to be tough for me. I already have it booked.
Okay.
We could do, we could do July too, or we could do, if other people can do it in June.
What did you say?
We could do July too, but we could do June. I mean.
Okay.
I'm free every week, every Thursday in June, except for the first.
Okay.
Yeah, the fifth, yeah.
Yeah, I know, the issue.
Karen, is the kind of thing that you would know in advance, that you could, you could arrange in advance or is there a better time that?
Although a lot of times I get out early on a Thursday.
Yeah, if it's.
So, uh.
If it's P and Z week.
Right, if it's P or, yeah. So what's P and Z week in June? Is it the eleventh? It's June 11th. So either the week of the 11th or the 25th, I can go.
Yeah, that's right.
Probably.
June 18th and 19th, so the 19th of Thursday, I'm going to be at Boothby Harbor.
Okay. Do you want to just say the twenty? Do you want to say twenty, twenty-six?
Twenty-six might be good.
George, is that?
Uh, I'm, no, I'll be, I'll be away.
Okay. Well, we can definitely do something in July too, you know, like for the next meeting, we can set up something for, for others.
Thing is, we don't all need to be there.
No, small groups aren't necessarily, are usually pretty good for that. So, uh, want me to pencil that in?
Pencil in the 26th at five? Which location?
Be determined.
Nate will figure it out. Open space inventory. At five.
Okay. All right, that's good. HVA crossing assessment?
That one, we have two more site visits, I think, to do for that at least. So.
And it's basically the same, um, it's basically the same scheduling thing. So you want to schedule those for July? Maybe we do that at the, we want to do that at the next meeting or do people have options in July already?
And this is something that maybe Christine, if you wanted to do this, you know, there's less navigation and like private property, you know, it's just getting there.
You mean like do it the Saturday as a?
Yeah, if you, if, if that worked.
But in the summer, people are busier on, on the weekends.
Yeah, but, um.
What are people's schedules like in July?
I'm good at the end of July.
I don't know what day, what's the, what's the?
Better at the end too.
You're better at the end as well?
What did you say Karen? I might be going out to California at the end of the ju-, at the end of July.
What about mid-July? No good?
Mid is.
Mid-July being like the 21st or?
Any, uh, I was looking at any time after the 17th.
After the 17th?
Yeah.
Eighteenth is when we're supposed to be out there.
Okay.
My daughter wants.
And you're gone for the, the, the whole rest of the month?
Um, I haven't like.
You haven't planned it yet?
The 18th or, I think it's 18th or 19th.
Okay.
Whatever the Sat-, which one's the Saturday?
Nineteenth is a Saturday.
Okay, so we definitely want to be there for then and maybe the 18th.
What, what about the 17th?
I'll be available on the 17th, but I will be available like the week of the 21st.
Okay. And how about you, Jeremy?
Uh, the 17th I can, it's my stuff on his birthday.
Okay, so you could do like the 24th or?
I could do, yeah, that week of like the 20, like fourth, yeah, I could do that week or the next week.
Okay. And George, same for you?
Twenty-four was good for me, yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we schedule for the 24th? Same thing, 5:00 PM?
Yep.
Okay, 5:00 PM, HVA. And we, can we do the last two?
Uh, what, in that day or?
Or is that impossible?
No, I, I think we're probably, so the three of them, there's one that's way up by like Timberlake.
Okay.
Like off Weed Road and that. And the other one is Burr Pond.
Okay.
And then, which is just Birmountain Road.
Yep.
And then there's the one that they identified that was like Winstead Road, Route Eight, like, like Elagroso.
Okay.
All the way to Torren, which I think is kind of an insane thing. I, I'm, I'm a little, I don't know. How do you even, how do you even do that?
Yeah.
That's like a million little assessments. I'm almost inclined to just kind of skip it.
Yep.
It's.
Let the, let the professionals come out and do that.
So we could do, I mean, but that, that's just a lot of driving from.
Right.
You know, you're going from the extreme.
Maybe we just do the Weed Road one.
Yeah.
Or Timberlake or whatever.
I, what I can do is I'll send a reminder out to everyone and we'll identify. I'll look for like good parking.
Okay.
There's a lot of that state, you know, we may want to meet up at a location and carpool together, um, if, if parking is limited on the road anyway.
Okay.
Burr Mount, Burr Pond is obviously pretty easy. We could probably park at the, uh, boat launch. And, you know, it's right on the road, so.
Okay, so that is on the 24th, 7/24. This one was on six. What, what was our date in June?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, six twenty-six. Okay, and then Red Mountain Trail.
Yes, so Red Mountain Trail is currently in permitting right now. No, it's still open. It's, it's, it's open to some modification. Inland Wetlands hasn't approved it yet and Planning and Zoning hasn't approved it yet. But I think Inland Wetlands plans on approval Ju-, uh, June 17th. I think they'll probably be, that'll give us all our time to address their comments as far as filling and, you know, the, the wetlands related impacts. And then planning and zoning, it'll be right after that. So I think the 20 something. The idea was to get ground, breaking ground on July 1st. However, we have run into a little bit of an issue with a, um, an easement. That's, uh, an ever-source easement that the crosses that somehow was missed and uh, scoping of this whole thing. And so we're looking to get permission from ever-source to pave over a utility easement. And they've not been very responsive.
That is not paved right now?
No, it's all grass.
Oh.
Um, and there's some utility bunkers associated with that easement, but somehow everyone just kind of missed that it was there. They haven't even respond, like, like, like Paul, our city engineer has been sending, uh, we have, um, Tim Waldron, who used to work for City Hall, is like our ever-source liaison. So we have someone who is like an, a, a city hall insider who's like the liaison and we're still getting crickets back. And Paul is being like, here's the easement map. Here's what we're going to do. We're really excited to talk to you about why we hope you let us do this here. But it's on Ocean State Job Lot property and Ocean State Job Lot's like, we're not going to give you a trail easement unless you figure this out, obviously, right? Because, uh, you know, they need to know.
They couldn't have gotten back to you sooner. I feel like it's, since they were the ones who are aware of the easement.
I know.
I don't know who the right person.
Well, and I'm relying on our city engineer, right? Because like he has the most interactions with ever-source in the util, in the, in the right of way, right? Like, I mean, I have no contacts with ever-source really.
We'll make you a trade. We'll give, grant, grant you an easement for our, something, what you want to do if you bring us.
Yeah, that's the way you have to.
Time to talk to.
Yeah. Well, they're, they're not even talking really, so it's, it's, so anyway, I mean, I, I am skeptical of the breaking ground on July 1st.
A hundred percent.
Um, but.
No, what's another 20 years?
But I mean, the hope is that we can get additional approvals, conditioned on that. And then if we have to, the thing is, if we have to modify it and not go through Ocean State Job Lot, we can, you know? But it's going to be mostly on me with the grant because.
Right.
The match comes from improvements on McDermott that was bonded. So we had this big bo-, match from city bonding that was already dedicated. So it was easy, easy money for the match and, uh, and we'd have to come up with that match if we went elsewhere. So, anyway, that, that's, that's, it's kind of a me problem.
Hold on a second though, because if the mayor is putting whatever we are short as a line item in the budget, isn't that a match?
Yeah, and I did, I, yeah, I brought that up to Paul and, and it's true. And I think that, I think we can find it. Like, it's more of a me problem as a.
You have to figure out how to.
It's just a headache for me.
You have to present it to.
We have to do an amendment of the contract and it's just, that's going to take a while.
Okay.
But, so hopefully we don't have to do that and we can just go the route, but we've already designed it this way, you know? It would address your concerns, uh, with, with, because it would go all the way, because then we'd have to go all the way out to North Elm instead of cutting through the plaza. So we would just connect there and then it would have to go down the sidewalk.
And so, is, are, SLR the ones that missed it? Because I was putting pressure on them.
I, I was inclined to assign blame to them considering that like, I didn't feel like it was my due diligence to like look at the easement. So I, we, we were aware that it existed and I assumed the language had been reviewed, but our city engineer was kind of like, well, I missed it too and, you know, um, he didn't seem to.
So if you can put some pressure on them to, you know.
They may have contacts.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'll talk to Paul about that. Because that, that was kind of what I was thinking, but he was immediately like, you know, let's, let's not, let's not lean on SLR for this one. I, I know, I was kind of like, well.
I mean, it's not like they not, aren't getting paid a whole heck of a lot of money on this. There's got to be some responsibility. They are working for us. I don't get it.
But they're stamp one on the plans, right?
Right, yeah.
They're responsible.
Yeah.
You know, keeping good, um.
Right.
With the city of Torren.
Well, I'm.
So, you know what I'm saying? Like, yeah, why?
Right, just do, at, at a minimum, some legwork for the. Right, just do, at, at a minimum, some legwork for the, for the ever-source contact to at least, we at least need to know where we're at with it. Like, are they gonna just say no? Is it? Yeah, I don't know. I, 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 I don't really know whether or not, yeah. But I will talk to Paul about, yeah, that, because I tend to kind of the same feeling.
Yeah, why do you think Paul's hesitating?
Um, he's managing a lot of contracts with them. I don't know, I think it's just a personal, you know?
Yeah.
I think he probably does feel responsible and that he probably should have caught it too.
Yeah, but, I mean, they're getting paid way more than, than he is for this.
Yeah, yeah, it was, uh, I definitely got caught flat-footed because I had a meeting with the attorney from Ocean State Job Lot and our, uh, city attorney. And she's like, well, the easement says X, Y, and Z, and I was like, well, I haven't really reviewed the easement too much, and she was like, you didn't do your due diligence? And she like, you know, I was like, it was not my, we have a co, we have a consultant, like, I don't, like, you know, that's in my mind what the consultant is for.
Yeah, so I don't know, does it help you if, uh, we direct you to?
I don't think, no, no, I just, I'll talk to him about it because he, at the end of the day, he wants to complete the project too and we're all frustrated.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, based on my experience with these kind of things, it could drag on for a long time, you know, and someone's got to bird dog it. They have to, you know, stay on top of it and, and if someone at SLR, I think, would be able to do that.
Right, and Paul is doing that as best he can from our perch, but, um, but yeah, having multiple, hitting them from multiple angles couldn't, couldn't hurt, right?
Right.
Okay, so that's, so that's basically though, that's, that's that whole deal, so, um, hopefully, hopefully we just stay on it and we can resolve it sooner rather than later. Be nice to do something this construction season. Cle, clear it maybe? But that's it, so.
Okay.
That's, yeah, we could at least get, if you cleared it in the fall, you would still have the sprint, you know, once it dried out.
Are we getting negative, um, calls on it from the public?
Some.
That's sort of surprising to me.
But not, not that many.
No, okay.
No, I, I, I've had a couple of people, I had one person on Goodwin Street who was just concerned that it was gonna change the character of a dead-end street, and I said, it will, and, but I really want you to look at these plans. If you want to come in, I can go over them with you. We really want your comment on it because you live here and we want to make it something useful for you to facilitate your access to the Ocean State Plaza, like, if that was part of the grant was being like, they have this dirt path that's kind of unlit and very unsafe looking and we want to make it so that it, you know, so that it, it, it helps your access to amenities in the plaza, right? So, you know, uh, she was kind of relieved by that. All the people, when I got on, they were a little edgy by the end of the call, they seemed okay. But it is going to Planning and Zoning and it's.
It's a public hearing.
The number of, it's a public hearing and the number of abutters is astonishing.
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty abutters. So I am certain that Planning and Zoning will have an active roster of comments. They haven't said it yet.
I thought it was.
Have they said it? I thought it's, it's the second meeting in June.
The 25th?
Yeah.
God, I hope I got that right. Did I get that right?
Second.
I gotta go, I gotta go.
Yeah, it's the second one because they need their wetlands approval before, uh, actually, no, maybe they'll, maybe they'll open it.
I think they're gonna open it on the 11th.
And then they'll continue it and then wait for the wetlands report and then on the 25th.
Hopefully I got that right. I double-checked that with Jeremy today. But.
Did you send us those?
Yeah.
Around that says when the hearings?
Yeah. Because they, yeah, Christine, actually, do, do you want to do that? Because if you, if that's in the minutes or like if you, if you can confirm that they said it on the last meeting.
I think I sent out the, I, I, I can't remember what property I sent out to public notice on, but I actually think it was Goodwin Street and I had it in there with the July 16th date and then, um, and then I double-checked with Jeremy and he said he wanted it on the 11th, so.
Okay, all right, well, then there you go.
I think that, I think I have that right, but.
But we'll send that and then if you want, I can even, when it gets to, uh, when the agenda's published, you can send the agenda to everyone, so you can log in or attend. We should, we should probably send that to like, oh, like Torrington Trails and.
Okay.
Everyone. The, 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 the crew.
Send P and Z agenda for 50 Goodwin to Conservation Torrington Trails. Anyone else?